Welcome to the Planning Board meeting for November 20th, 2025. Will everyone please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The upcoming meeting dates for 2025 is December 16th, 2025, and then at that meeting we'll also publish and approve the meeting schedule for 2026. We have the minutes from the October 30th, 2025 meeting. Could I have a motion to approve them?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. First item on the agenda, Valley Christian Church has asked to be adjourned to December 16th, so could I have a motion to adjourn their public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and the next item on the agenda is 4549 Foster Road. We are in an open, a public meeting, so could I have a motion to reopen the public meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Paul Varanouskas with Wayland Architecture. We represent the owner and the tenants, and my understanding is that we've submitted another site plan for review and approval from you all. Part of it had to do with the possibility of land banking, the, some parking on the property, even though we had the 90 parking spots for the medical usage in the upper floor that we're looking to do the work on. But the, the option was to see if we can also include some land banking there too, which we did. And you'll see, I'll try and show you a little bit on this. So we have the, the two entrances that were to the single-family home, which we are looking to have that changed over to a caretaker home. We were, we're looking to abandon one of the entry points here, and then look to do, put about four spots in this general area right here. We're still allowing the other entry point from the single-family home, so for fire apparatus, that could still come into the driveway there. So that's one aspect. The other aspect last time, I think, was, it was a little unclear about where the septic fields were and the, the septic tanks were, so some more research was done on that, and it looks like there's two septic fields right out in this front area here, and the septic tank for one of them is off to the side, and the other one is closer to the, the home, the residential building. So as you can see, we're, we're trying to appease what, which makes sense actually, is to put some land bank in there, because as you know, medical space, parking gets a little tight sometimes, and so we're, we're in agreement to try and do that for you guys. So that's part of it. The, the next thing is that, we talked about the driveway. I know there was talk about maybe even expanding some more parking on there if possible, possibly over the septic fields, but we did talk with our engineer, and he doesn't recommend that, especially not knowing how the actual septic fields were designed. So at this point, we're not looking to necessarily do that, and that would be over in these two areas here. So we're trying to just keep the four extra spaces. We would like to, if we do those spaces, we would like to designate them as staff parking. All right, so this way, up in the main parking area, it is for patients that are coming, all right, and just leave the, the other four spots for staff only.
Where does the caretaker park?
As far as I remember, they are, they're, they could park, I guess they would have to park in one of those spots actually too. So three would be for staff, one would have to be for the caretaker in that case.
Just a single-person caretaker?
That I do not have an answer on for you. We can look into that though for you and see what it is. Okay? So that's one aspect of this. The other was that there's a whole list of, I know, items that were being requested throughout the site for signage and things of that nature, which we're more than happy to do. We've listed them here throughout the, the drawing. We've tagged them along the drawing lines for that, those areas to be taken care of. So we're in total agreement with taking care of those things for you guys. So at that point, we're just seeing if there's any other questions from the board, or is the public, I guess, still able to ask questions as well, right?
Indeed. Yes. So any questions or comments by board members? If not, any questions or comments by our professionals? No. Dave, anything? Okay. We, we appreciate the effort, by the way, on, on the additional parking spaces.
Absolutely.
Are there any members of the public here to speak for or against the project? There being none, I'll accept a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
All, second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. This is a type 2 under Seeker, so it, no further Seeker review is required, and so I'll launch right into the resolution. This is a resolution of amended site plan approval and special permit for caretaker's unit. Name of site plan, second-floor interior renovations for Rabbi Singa, 49 Foster Road, administrative storage to medical, medical spa use. Resolution offered by Planning Board member John Eichman, whereas the above-referenced applicant applied to the Town of East Fishkill Planning Board for an amended site plan approval to replace second-floor administrative space in Building 1, which is 49 Foster Road, with medical and medical spa offices, landbank four new parking spaces, and receive a special permit for a caretaker's unit in the form, actually, are these going to be landbanked or they're going to be actual parking spaces that you're going to?
We can do either, so we're...
They're sho, I think they're shown as landbanked?
They're shown as landbank right now.
Okay, well, that, that's acceptable, we, I think.
And I think the idea was that if we show that and that gets approved, that if the time comes that we need them, we can go right to building permit instead of having to come back.
Yes.
Perfect.
Okay. So we're good with that. And receive a special permit for the caretaker's unit at the former Mestelli House, and whereas the site plan demonstrates that the existing number of parking spaces exactly meets the town code requirements, whereas as part of the amended site plan approval, the applicant will landbank four new parking spaces in front of the former Mestelli House in the event of future parking shortage, and whereas as part of the amended site plan, additional landscaping will be installed to screen the landbanked parking area along the frontage of the property, and whereas the applicant has applied for the caretaker's unit's special permit to convert the existing residents on the property to a caretaker's unit, and whereas the action is considered a type 2 action under Seeker, no further Seeker review is required, whereas the Planning Board opened a public hearing on the site plan October 30th, 2025, and closed the public hearing on November 20th, 2025. Now therefore, be it resolved, that the Planning Board approves site plan titled Second Floor Interior Renovations, et cetera, dated Au, excuse me, under plans prepared by Wayland Architecture, PLLC, dated August 26th, 2025, last revised November 14th, 2025, with the following conditions. Number one, satisfactory resolution of all comments in the RENIA Engineering Design PLLC letter dated September 16th, 2025. Number two, satisfactory resolution of all comments in the 92625 memo of site visit notes prepared by Michelle Robbins and Matt Rickett and Danielle Angiell, excuse me. And number three, Dutchess County Health Department approval for the septic system capacity with the proposed expansion of use. Be it further resolved within five business days or the adoption of the resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the Planning Board, shall cause a copy of this resolution be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner. Could I have a second for this?
Second.
Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Board member Lori G.
Aye.
Ed Maiochi.
Aye.
Richard Campbell.
Aye.
Donald Pepe.
Aye.
John G. Agnoli.
Aye.
And John Eichman, I'm an aye. Carries. Passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is Joe's Carriage House.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening.
Do you have the, is the PDF available here that was sent in to the Planning Board?
I can go grab it. You don't have it?
No, I don't have it.
Okay. Glad you could stop.
All right. Good evening. My name is Nick Fusco with R-LX Consulting and Design. I'm here on behalf of the owners of 3760 Route 52, which will be Joe's Carriage House. That's Joe Vulaj and Victor Vulevich. So there's a couple of things that we're going to be proposing, and I'll take you through the actual plan. This was an existing restaurant that they would like to maintain as a restaurant. The existing kitchen is not really in great shape. The existing freezer's not in great shape, and it's also not functional as they would like it to be. So we're proposing to renovate that portion of the building with a small addition as well, so the square footage is expanding. The other portion of this is to change the facade of the building, which is very boxy. There's a lot of different additions, so we're trying to unify the building to make it look a little nicer from the road. On top of that, there's a patio extension that we're proposing for outdoor seating along with a couple of seedings for fire pits, as well as an outdoor shed bar, which would be used as well as a bar for the outdoor seating. We're also proposing to expand the parking. I know that there were some comments about the location of the parking, making sure that it's outside of the setbacks, so that we maintain some separation from the residences in the area, and so that's something that we're open to as well. There is a caretaker's cottage that's on the property, so there's some discussion about how we can potentially make that an actual apartment, or if it does need to be left as a caretaker's cottage. So there was some discussion about how we can possibly do something to accomplish that. I think that sort of sums up the project. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Yes, so can you tell us a little bit about the operation, hours of operation?
Yes.
Things like entertainment that will be going on and create noise outside in the patio area, things like that?
Sure. So it's going to be operating as a restaurant. We would hope that the, the noise to the exterior would be to a minimum. It's not going to be a large party space unless the space is rented out for particular parties or things like that. If there is a larger party, there would be some sort of valet for overflow of parking beyond what would be available in terms of the spaces that we're proposing. Do you guys want to add anything more to?
Like party, just like reunions, baptisms, like stuff like, like, you know, just family, you know, the party, like, no, like, like, no blasted music after. We're not allowed to anyways, but like, no, nothing like that.
And what would the hours, you guys?
Uh, Sunday, like, Sunday through Thursday.
Oh, if you're speaking, you have to come up to the...
No.
Yeah, sorry.
Okay.
I just want to come out. Sorry about that.
We close Mondays, open six days, 12 to 9 weekdays, and then 12 to 10 Friday, Saturday.
Okay. Got it. So no amplified sound outdoors?
I mean, it look like just background music, Frank Sinatra and stuff like that, of course. You know, during regular hours.
Have you had a chance to visit with the residents that's nearby?
I know the neighbor across the street, it's a lady. She lives alone. She's not, I, I don't really, just small conversation, I told her what we're doing. It was a restaurant before, she knew us from, because Joe had it as Mike and Joe's Stormville, and his father had it as Fortuna before, so we were...
The residents next door, which was just built by Russell Briganti.
Oh, that person, so.
Yeah, he's in the process, I think he's selling the home, so I don't know that there's a new owner yet there, but we do have a relationship with the current owner and...
Got it. Okay.
But the prior operation didn't have outdoor activity?
There was, there was an outdoor patio. I don't know exactly what the seating was, but there is an existing patio there, and we're looking to just expand upon it and make it a little more usable for, you know...
But you're going to add a bar and another function out there beyond just having seat, seating?
Yes, yeah, so it would be, there are three fire pit locations with seating around them, and then the, the bar, which has some seating out of, as, at it as well.
Are you thinking about doing any kind of fencing or landscaping at the property line?
Yes.
With that, other residents?
I know one of the comments was to create some sort of landscaping buffer between the residential property and this property along that parking. There is a good amount up to where the house is built, so wherever we would need to, we would propose some landscaping there, as well as putting some on the, the front property line that's adjacent to the road.
Okay.
Because we know that there was some taken out. It was mostly done to clear up a lot of the overgrowth, but we'd like to add some back in there as well.
Got it. Any other questions or comments by board members?
Just can you give a quick description, you're adding the addition, is that for customers? Is it expanding the kitchen?
So the addition is in, in part for pickup orders, so there's a small counter area, there's no seating in there, it's just a countertop. There's also a pizza oven in that area too, so that would double for the restaurant, and then the rest is for the kitchen and for access to the basement, the new basement, for storage.
Okay. So with the additional footage, the parking is working?
So I have a whole bunch of comments.
Okay.
Do you want me to start, or do you want to finish first?
Did you have anything further, Lori?
I'm good.
Go ahead, Michelle.
So this one came in, the most, a lot of the renovations have already been in, done. So there's a, some building permits that they've taken out, which was a requirement is for them to come in front of the Planning Board, because they're trying to correct some of the stuff that was, that was done without permits. But in the, so it's, obviously, it's a pre-existing, non-conforming restaurant, it's been for decades. So the main thing is that, what's different from it, because it was once the formal, former Harold's, is that the parcel that, there was two parcels that made up Harold's, and one was just used for overflow parking, but that parcel is now a, a new residential home. I think it was built in the last year or so, right?
Yes.
And they have basically extended the existing parking lot that was part of Harold's further back into the site, kind of along, directly along the property line of the new home. So you're saying that you're proposing to put some fencing? I don't think I saw, unless you missed it. You're going to add that?
Yeah, so based on the comments that we received, one of the things is to move the parking sort of away. We're going to lose some of the parking area that's there.
Okay.
But moving that away so that it's outside of the setback, not within.
Okay, so one of the, the, we don't have the advantage of seeing the plan, but the parking lot kind of just runs along the boundary of the parcel, so we had suggested perhaps bending the parking lot into the interior of the parcel away from the home, because I'm just concerned about the conflict of, of land uses, particularly if there's outdoor events happening, you don't want to have your neighbor complaining regularly if, and if there's a fence there and maybe some landscaping, that'll go a long way towards protecting the residents, and then also just in case that people that are parked there, sometimes, you know, they could wander over onto their property by mistake, so if there's a fence there, it demarcates that. So I think that's a good idea. Then, let's see. I believe what may work best for you in order to get it all legalized, and something you might want to consider, is we recently adopted a mixed-use residential special permit, because I know you are interested in putting some residential units here.
Yeah.
You, you should look at the language there. I think that special permit would cover what you want to do on that site, and may actually help you achieve some of the things that you're trying to achieve. So I would suggest that you take a look at it. It is section 194, 46.12, and it's called the Mixed Use Redevelopment Special Permit. So I think that will help you avoid needing some of the variances that you're going to have to go for otherwise.
Yeah, no, I agree also.
So, let's see. There was talk at some point, and I don't know where this came from, I think maybe Matt Rickett from the Building Department told me this, and he must have spoken with you guys about it, that you were trying to consider separate apartment access from Derschmidt?
Yes, I think that was something that was discussed with, with the owners. I, I think the belief was that that would make things a little bit easier in terms of approving that as an apartment versus it just being a caretaker's cottage.
Okay, so there's, on the parcel, there's the restaurant building, and then there's a small...
Cottage.
Cottage, yeah. And the cottage has two floors, the, the top floor of the cottage is not, does not meet code. So basically, there is a bedroom up there, but it, it, there's a very small, narrow staircase that goes up, so it no longer meets the requirements to have a bedroom up there, so that's one thing. But the applicant, I guess, was looking into, there's a road that runs alongside the property, it's Derschmidt, it goes back into a subdivision, and potentially having access off Derschmidt to that, to that residence.
Cottage.
Yeah, to the cottage. So if you were going to propose that, you probably would need obviously to speak with the town highway department, and also come in and show us what you want to do, and we'll have to evaluate it and see if that's possible.
And I would think that you want to make sure it doesn't directly connect into the parking area, because then the residents on the residential street are going to feel that it's...
Yeah, no, they're completely separate, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Based on today, does the building in the cottage have a certificate of occupancy?
It did.
Yeah, yeah, so the...
And the cottage, the seal on it is as a caretaker's cottage, right?
The, the seal, no, what happened was it was a pre-existing residential, there was a pre-existing residential unit. In fact, I think there was also at one time a residential unit in the home, but both the, in the second floor, but in the second floor, again, of the restaurant didn't meet code either. So in more recent years, when we'd gone out there, we had limited the residential use to the, to the first floor, and we were saying you couldn't use the upstairs as a bedroom, because it has a narrow staircase.
And where that cottage is, it connects to that Derschmidt road where they could have the...
It doesn't connect yet.
They're going to need an easement?
They would have to create a road to come into the driveway.
Well, their property only goes to it.
Goes through Derschmidt.
Yes. Okay.
And then if they're able to use the mixed-use special permit, they don't need to worry about designating the cottage as a caretaker's unit, is that correct?
Um, yes, exactly.
Okay.
They would get, they would, it would be designated as a residential unit as part of this, they'd have to meet all the requirements of the special permit, but they could do that, yeah.
Okay.
And then they'd have to bring the second floor up to code.
They'd have to, they'd have to figure that out, yeah, with the, what, they'd have to, either that or turn it into storage.
Or abandon it.
Yeah.
Or abandon it, yeah. Make it a...
Exactly.
Is the only issue right now, the, the staircase, do we know, or is that...
Um, no, I think there's, I think there might be other stuff, but I don't know off the top of my head.
That'd be a, a building.
Okay.
You also would have to go through ARC approval, you'll have to get ARC approval. Show your generator on the site plan. I guess, I don't know if Matt, that was something Matt knew, that you were thinking of putting a generator in, so make sure you show that on your site, the site plan, if it isn't there. Identify the type of buried tank on the site plan, because there's, I think there's some things on the site plan that are shown, because it was like a survey done, right, in Azabel?
Yes.
And they just want to...
Clarify.
Clarify, give a little more detail. Location of the sign, the, the sign, I think, is new out there.
It's the same existing sign and, and structure. I think the only thing that's changed is...
They just dressed it up.
Yeah, they just painted it, I think, is the only difference. It's the same location that it was.
So are you planning to leave that sign in that location?
Yeah.
Okay. We'd like to see some landscaping around the propane tanks and oil tanks, because you can, they're in the front of the building, so we'd like to dress that up.
Yeah, so that's also going to get moved to the side too, but it'll be, it'll be cleaned up so that it's not seen.
Okay.
But I don't think they're going to be in the front of the building anymore either.
And then, I'm assuming you're planning to make it, are you paving the parking lot, or are you just leaving it gravel?
I believe we're, they're going to leave it gravel.
So we'll have to have some sort of curb stops to demarcate the, the...
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly. And then handicap spaces will have to be marked too.
Yeah.
And once you, once we've determined how many spaces are going to be out there, I can tell you how many handicap spaces you need.
Okay.
But until you have the final number, I won't be able to tell you that.
Of course.
And then, I think you did kind of show the outdoor dining area and seating area. I'd like to see the, you demarcate the number of seats that you're going to have out there.
Yeah, seating tables, and then also square footage associated with those areas.
Exactly.
That's going to be coordinated with the Health Department.
Yeah, yeah. It's all going to be coordinated, yeah. And, because right now, you're showing, I think, we were trying to figure out the square footage, and it may, because what they're doing is they're adding, I believe, you can correct me if I'm wrong, your restaurant space is going to stay exactly the same as the existing restaurant space. You're expanding the kitchen, but you are adding a little takeout area.
Yeah.
So people would come in, be able to pick up their takeout and go.
Yeah.
So...
We're also adding to the outdoor...
And then you're adding the outdoor seating, right. So, so there is going to be an expansion, or if they can't do the expansion, there could be, if you're using outdoor, then you might have to not use some indoor spaces.
Absolutely.
So you have, you're going to have a capacity, right?
Yeah.
And you're going to have to meet that capacity one way or the other. So those are my first flush of comments.
Any other comments by our professionals? Dave, anything from you?
Uh, well, we submitted from the advisory board, our recommendations, whatever, we haven't heard anything back. Hopefully, that'll be in future...
Yeah.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Got it.
Yeah, we, we received those comments.
Okay. So we need to refer them to the ARC, and do we need to declare intent to be lead agency, or?
Um, no, it's really, it's an existing structure.
Right, got it. Okay. So if there's no other questions or comments, I'll accept a motion to refer the applicant to the ARC.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you very much. We'll look forward to seeing you.
And I'll just say one thing, if you do the MERS, we also will have to, at the time, if you decide to do the mixed-use residential special permit, you will have to advertise for that at the same time we do the site plan.
Okay.
So just make sure you keep that in mind, because...
Okay, and when you say advertise, you mean like a...
When you do the, for the, for your public hearing, for your site plan, amended site plan, you would have to, yeah, we'll, we'll help you along with that. I'm just telling you that, because if, you know, you'll, you'll have to let us know one way or the other if we're going to do the special permit.
Right, okay. Yeah, no, perfect. I appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda would have been Spring Brook Meadows. They've requested that we defer anything on their application until next month, so that won't be considered this evening. So the last item on the agenda is Duncan Teconic. I wanted to say Dunkin' Donuts, but it's just Duncan, right?
You switched it, it's Duncan.
Got it.
Yeah, I made the same mistake.
DD?
Yeah.
Got some boards here.
No, there's no comments.
I'm trying to get it somewhere where everybody can see. How's there? All right. Good evening, everyone. My name is Connor McCormick. I'm with Colliers Engineering and Design. I'm a project manager for the project. So I'll just, we, we made a sketch plan submission. It's very conceptual in nature, it's done on best available mapping. What we're looking for tonight is basically get initial comments from the board, so we can incorporate them as we move forward with a fully engineered set of plans here. So, brief introduction, the project is Duncan, located in the Teconic Plaza. That is about a third of a mile southwest of the Teconic and 52 intersection, just to get your bearings. The address is 2593 New York State Route 52. Currently, the site has two existing commercial buildings. Building 1 is the larger of the two, the L-shaped one here, and then you have the standalone building here that we refer to as Building 2. It has frontage along Route 52 to the southeast. It's currently served by an onsite well and septic systems. A portion of the site is located within the 100-year floodplain and the site today is zoned B1 general business with this use being approved subject to planning board approval. So, the proposed action is essentially to take the existing Duncan facility, that's located in the end cap of the larger building, and relocate it to the standalone building that has a vacant space now. The purpose of that is, if anyone that's been with Duncan...
Sir, we just need you to stay near the mic so we can...
There you go.
Sorry about that. So, again, we're relocating an existing Duncan facility to a different building and the purpose of that is so we can add a drive-through to support the business. So, this existing building right now, one unit, half of it is occupied with, I believe it's a beverage retailer. They're going to go into the northern half. We're going to be adjusting some of the existing curbs onsite and some of the striping to allow for a through, a drive-through at the rear of the property. As it's proposed right now, we'll be adding two man doors to the building as well as a bump out for the drive-through. As it's shown here, we're queuing about 14 spaces, which is a pretty typical number for a Duncan of this size. The proposed Duncan's going to have 19 interior seats. There's going to be no soil disturbance outside the existing pavement area. In total, with the restriping and the adjustment of the curbs and adding the drive-through, we lose about 17 parking spaces, I believe we had 90-plus in surplus after that, those were removed. So, there's plenty of parking for the proposed uses out there. That is, I mean, that's the summary of the project. I had two things I did want to ask the board regarding freestanding signage and the other thing, I wanted to see if there was an update on the moratorium for new applications, those are the two questions I have for the board, but other than that, I'd love to hear your feedback and just take your comments down.
Tom, can you speak to the question of the moratorium?
It would in effect is an amendment to an existing site.
Okay.
Thank you.
Got it. So, first thing I want to point out to you is that there are some unresolved violations there that have been issued by our Building Department. So, in order to be able to move to the next step, you'll want to take care of those.
I would just reach out to the Building Department to get those?
Yes. And the owner would also have the correspondence on that. And it mainly relates to parking in fire lanes and boats and trailers and things of that nature. So, when you start to redo some of the curbing and everything, are you also going to try to account for truck circulation, delivery truck circulation? Because as I understand it, now trucks actually park out on the highway shoulder to deliver things because it's apparently difficult to get into the site or to go around the site, I'm not sure which.
We haven't done a truck turning diagram on this, but now that you raise that concern, that's something that we can incorporate.
Great.
We did speak to Duncan specifically, not the other tenants that are out there and what their delivery schedule is and what kind of vehicles they use. They'll have a daily delivery, like a Sprinter van, so typical like van movement shouldn't be an issue there. And then they'll have a weekly delivery of, it's like a box truck, I think it's a WB45, it's the smaller, it's not the big tractor-trailer size. So, we'll run that vehicle through the site to determine that it can make all the curbs and if it can't, we will make adjustments to islands as required and identify the area that needs to make the turn. Other than that, I think we could do, we'd probably want to check the same thing for the local fire truck.
Yes.
Yeah, that, those are the two big ones, so.
If you have a... Actually, we're not doing any public hearing just yet.
Oh, he's the owner.
He's the owner.
I'm sorry, you're the owner.
Sorry.
My apologies, yes, please do.
Step up to the mic there, John.
Come on over.
Good evening.
Good evening, how are you? My name is John Spatterford.
Hi, John.
So, the plaza does have tractor-trailer access. My father built this plaza over 35 years ago. Tractor-trailers do come there and do make deliveries. The tractor-trailers that park on the shoulder, those are people that don't want to pull in the parking lot, they're not making deliveries. Those are just regular truckers. Because we get delivery for Dunkin' Donuts, the tractor-trailer comes in, parks right on the side, tractor-trailer. The restaurant, tractor-trailer. The deli, tractor-trailer.
The liquor store.
Tractor-trailer. Tractor-trailers have been coming into this parking lot for 35 years.
Got it.
Never been an issue.
Got it.
So, we have that access.
Okay.
So, you're saying that the tractor-trailers parking out there are customers?
Customers.
Yes.
They're customers, they park to, they park on the side of the shoulder and they run into Duncan because they don't want to pull in the parking lot.
Understood.
They run into the deli, they don't want to put them in the parking lot. And then you said about the open violation?
Yeah.
I addressed that violation as soon as I got it in August. We received it again, I addressed it again, now we received it again. And I had my cousin send this certified mail to Matt Ricketts, who is not acknowledging it. So, I don't know what else to do with that. We had a long discussion about it because he was complaining that people have come into the parking lot and they park in the fire lane. And I said to him, I own a lot of commercial property, the fire lane is governed by the town, not by the landlord. So, if somebody's in the fire lane, call the police department, have them ticketed and towed. Why are you calling the landlord? Just as if somebody parks in the handicap and doesn't put up a handicap sign. Are you going to call the landlord or are you going to call the police station?
Well, maybe the markings weren't up to date.
Markings are there, signs are there.
And, and John, you know, some of the trucks, I agree with you, some of the tractor-trailers out in the road, but some of them have Dunkin' Donuts printed on them. So, it would be coincidental, well, I'm just saying, this is a...
I've never seen Dunkin', because Dunkin' usually parks...
And I don't think there's a Dunkin' Donuts that this board is dealt with, that when we go out, that we say, they do have tractor-trailer deliveries. So, I think you have to make...
Well, they do have tractor-trailers, yeah.
You're going to have to make...
I see them there. They do have tractor-trailers that deliver.
How many times this board has heard from the other Dunkin' Donuts, oh, we don't have tractor-trailers?
No, no, they have, they have tractors.
Right.
But the tractors always come in the parking lot and then they park right here while they're making their...
But now where they're on the other side, that's where he has to show.
Well, what they do is they drive around, so if you go to the original site plan for this plaza, we have a tractor-trailer road, this is the roadway. That's why they did not allow us to put parking spaces over here because this is supposed to come in and it's supposed to go this way, this way, and that way. Out.
So, that's how the deliveries will go to Duncan if it's...
Correct. So, what they would do is Duncan would get a tractor-trailer that would come in, go around the building, they'd come over here and on this side, we have parking spots that were a loading zone for the liquor store. So, right on, before you hit over here, the road here is wide enough that there's these spots here, that's where the tractor-trailer is supposed to go.
But now, the drive-through, I assume, is going to be using that same lane?
No, they're going to be using the lane over here. So, the road from the berm to the other side of the berm is approximately 40 feet.
So, may you just show where, where do they get against the building?
Where's the window?
For the kick-out, where's the window?
The window would be at the back of the building over here.
Right, so, so if a car's there and a tractor-trailer is there?
You still have 30 feet to the curb.
And you got to have a bypass lane too, so.
Yeah, there is a bypass lane on the drive-through, I think. It seems like it's going to work because it's happening in reality, it just will show it on the...
It seems like you have room to the property line, if you had to move the curb or something, you got room to do that.
Oh, yes.
There's plenty, I don't see it being a problem, yes.
Yeah, there's a lot of room at the property, but the way it stands, there's a lot of room there now. Okay.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification, appreciate it.
I know you talked a little bit about the interest of the tractor-trailers for, for the, sorry, can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
For the, for the Duncan, if you're going to have a drive-through now, are you considering making a right and left turn exits, so a third lane?
You want to add a...
Widening that entrance so that cars can exit, because you're going to have queuing for people waiting to turn to get back to the Teconic, right?
Yeah, it's full access right now, we're going to, we would keep it full access. I mean, at this point, without having a traffic study, I can't answer that. As I see it, it's the same use moving into a different site, so I don't see any more traffic generation?
Well, you're going to have a drive-through now, so it's not exactly the same use, right? Theoretically, you're going to move it because you can get more cars coming through when you have a drive-through.
Correct.
So, I'm just suggesting for your, for your egress, you may want two lanes, a right-hand turn lane and a left-hand queue.
Okay. Ultimately, it's a state highway.
What's that?
Yeah, the state will weigh in on it.
Yeah, the state is going to have a strong opinion on what, I know they won't want...
You know it's going to queue up if you don't, or cars are going to be trying to scoot around each other, it's just...
Initiate that, see if they want that or not.
Correct, and the state typically doesn't like multiple access points in close proximity to each other if they can avoid it.
It would be one, right? You would just expand it to have a right-hand out, right-hand only.
Yeah, she's saying widen the egress.
Just widen the opening.
So, they have a left and right turn.
Okay. I, ultimately, based on the traffic report that, or what the DOT's comments are, we would accommodate that. If that is warranted, we'll do it.
Okay.
Got it.
Not opposed to that.
And currently, do you have any septic issues out there?
Not to my knowledge, John, I don't know if you, I was out there yesterday, walked all around the septic field, it's dry, you know, as much as you can see from the surface. The only other thing I would like to get some feedback from the board on is the freestanding sign. So, currently, there's one freestanding sign at the entrance here. It's a, it basically just has a little packer for every business there. I think the end user of Duncan would like their own dedicated freestanding sign. I understand for the code, there's one per lot, I don't know if that's something the board has approved in the past, I just wanted to see your thoughts, if that's going to be a non-starter or something we'd have to go through ZBA for.
Yeah, you're going to have to get a special approval for that, yeah.
Okay. Is that something the board has done in the past, though?
Not typically. But, yeah, it would, yeah, and I might actually have to go to the sign review board.
But they could accommodate signage on the building, right?
Yeah, there could be signage on the building, but there, but, yeah. So, you'd have to propose something and we'd have to review it and whatnot.
Sure.
Okay.
Okay.
I just have a couple of comments.
Please go ahead.
So, we will have Brendan, I, Brendan will look at this, Lori, because I had the same...
Okay.
Thought about the entrance. Also, we, I think we should need to add some, like the original landscaping is gone from the front, front of the plaza, so I think there needs to be a little bit of landscaping put back in here to meet the original site plan's landscaping. So, I think we need to add a little landscaping along the frontage of Route 52.
Into the basins out in front of the road?
Yeah, yeah, just, just clean it up a little bit out there, yeah. I can show you with the original.
Yeah, I'd be worried about putting too many bushes there because it would make it harder to see.
Yeah, there just has to be something, yeah, cleaned up. And then, I think you're proposing, right, to break, to break through. I think it's kind of tight on that corner, but we'll have the, there's some drive-through regulations, so I don't know if you saw those in the code or not.
I didn't.
There are some very, there are some specific ones, I don't, I know it's a little bit tight in one section, you may have, may have enough room for it, but I'll have the traffic engineer review that with you.
Michelle, can you, do you have the code section in front of you? We can always look it up.
Yeah, I can look it up for you.
Michelle's, oh, you found it?
Yep, 194, 112.3.
Thank you.
The only thing I just, I'd like to add is, back to the DOT. Before you get too far into this, you may just want to vet this out with the DOT that. I know there's been other areas on state roads where that, once Dunkin' Donuts with the drive-through comes in, you know, they potentially started looking at turn lanes.
Okay.
I don't think you want to go too far without vetting that out.
We don't even have a survey yet, so now would be the time to ask.
Because I know that's, that would be a big deal, so.
You mean internally and on 52 itself, yeah.
Like, that's one thing you definitely want to check that box before you get too deep into it.
Other questions or comments from board members or professionals? Okay. Very good.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for the presentation. And thank you, John, thank you. Be back. Okay, if there is no further business for the planning board, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.